Good evening, I would like to call the September sixteenth, twenty twenty four New Albany Plain Local Board of Education meeting to the quarter. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll. Ms. Fuller, here. Mr. Newmoff?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
President Kalamowski, here. And Mr. McCollum is absent. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the true authority of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the God of justice and justice.
Board members have had the opportunity to review the minutes from our August twelfth, twenty twenty four regular Board of Education meeting, as well as the minutes from our August twenty sixth, twenty twenty four regular Board of Education meeting. If there are no additions or corrections, may I have a motion and a second to approve those meeting minutes, please?
So move it. Second.
Mr. Newmoff and Mr. Wilson. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
President Kalamowski? Yes, and the motion passes. Superintendent Sorensen, are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda?
President Kalamowski, members of the board, there's an addendum agenda this evening for an action I am under general business to approve the two thousand twenty four, twenty five CIP as recommended.
Thank you. With that addendum, may I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
So move it.
Second. Mr. Wilson and Ms. Fuller. Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
President Kalamowski?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next is an opportunity for public participation. And with no participants this evening, we'll move right into communications to the board with a plea update.
This is Walker.
This is Jennifer Walker from the intermediate school. Superintendent Sawyer, Superintendent Martin Kramer, Treasurer Jenkins, President Kalamowski.
Vice President Newmoff, and board members Wilson and Fuller.
Adam Haplo.
We have three highlights for tonight. Maggie Kaminsky, middle school science teacher, attended the American Modeling Teaching Association Physics Workshop at Baldwin Wallace University was passed July. The workshop focused on how, teaching how to use the modeling practice through the lens of the physics classroom. It was also a way to connect with other science teachers in the Great Lakes region. This workshop will allow Maggie to teach some of her coworkers how to model and implement it into the classroom. This instructional strategy will also help students develop communication skills and critical thinking skills. In initial, in addition, the modeling and practice strategies will help improve student learning by making them more critical thinkers and increase their teamwork skills within the classroom. Ms. Cindy Zimmerman, the academic intervention teacher at the primary school, took a class called English Language Learners, Methods and Materials. This course focused on the best way to support students learning a new language in the classroom. The information shared will help her support students in small math construction. Learning new ways to support E L learners will help achieve proposed benchmark three to meet or exceed state achievement gap closing standards for identified subgroups. Additionally, Ms. Zimmerman completed the graduate course self-care, healthy strategies for sustaining excellence. This course focused on the ways to be the most productive at school and at home to avoid teacher burnout. It provided ideas of how to take care of yourself so that you can be best to take care of your students. In addition, it provided small activities that can be completed with students to help them be less stressed in the school setting so they can perform at their highest ability. This course will help support proposed benchmark five, enhancing school culture, social emotional wellbeing, and stakeholder satisfaction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next are superintendent items. Superintendent Sorensen.
President Kalamowski, members of Board of Education, we're going to begin this evening with a campus master plan as part of my superintendent item update. For the things we're going to talk about this evening, Ms. Jenkins and I are going to take turns going through some information related to activities that have occurred related to the campus master plan since our last Board of Education meeting. Just to remind everyone and to ground us. There it is. Um, to remind everyone, because we haven't talked about this for a while, we've just been giving updates on what we're doing with the architects and council, and we'll still talk about that this evening. But to ground everyone back into what projects are included in the why, I'm going to start first with the why now. So I just want to remind everyone, based upon the work that we've done over the course of the last three years of the school district, and most recently in the work with the city of New Albany and with New Albany Company, with cooperative strategies, our elementary buildings are at capacity, so we're ninety to ninety-eight percent fully occupied at the elementary level with the E L C primary school and intermediate school today. The middle school and high schools still have some opportunity when we go to ideal utilization between seventy-five and eighty-five percent. However, when we look at our existing school facilities, there's need to renovations associated to technology, science labs, and what we're specifically doing in the arts to benefit students in the long term for what our vision is for the school district when we updated the two thousand twenty four campus master plan. Lastly is the growth expectation. So based upon the work that we've been doing through the course of the last three years, dominantly within the last year with Naco and with the city, we're forecasting an approximate one thousand new students over the next ten years within our school district for the planned community development that sits within our twenty-three geographic miles called the New Albany Plain Local Schools. And those are the developments we actually know of today based upon that work. Anything outside of the purview of the city of New Albany and Albany Company, like the city of Columbus, we've talked about this at a board meeting, with the apartment complex that's projected to be on Hamilton Road, that's to the city of Columbus. So it's not the same level of communication that we receive, obviously, with the city of New Albany and with the New Albany Company. So what's happening specifically as part of issue forty, so it's two-phase approach that between two thousand twenty-five and two thousand twenty-eight, we would build a new elementary school building to address our current capacity needs of being ninety to ninety-eight percent fully occupied at the elementary level that will serve one thousand twelve hundred students in the long term of what will happen to the school district over the course of the next ten years. It would house all-day kindergarten, first and second grades, addresses our current capacity need. But again, but then restructure campus with the opening of that school building in the fall of two thousand and twenty-seven. So when that building would open, we would make the primary school grades three and four, the intermediate school grades five and six, the middle school would stay grade seven and eight, the high school would become grades nine through twelve. Also, as part of phase one, we would renovate the existing H building, which is the iconic rotunda building that sits on Dublin Graham Road and the main quad at the high school. It was originally a punk center, a false library, a beautiful building on the outside, not fully functional for all school needs on the inside. We're proposing renovating that, renovating that building to all things technology, to become a technology hub, to better meet the academic development only to fit specifically in the tech lane. Both from what we're looking for career pathways all the way through the coursework with students taking grades nine through twelve associated with technology, excuse me. We would renovate the existing middle school stadium. I've shared publicly before, it's original, it hasn't had a facelift since it was built. We use our current veterans field and Eagle Stadium over three hundred days a year by students and community members. It's open to the community during the day. We're proposing actually renovating the middle school stadium to benefit over a thousand kids that participate in intersclassing sports in grade seven through twelve every single year. In this case, we would actually add a new turf field, be multipurpose for multiple sports, just like the high school stadium is, a six-lane track, indoor restrooms, a press box, and a concession stand, much like what we have at the Eagle Stadium. Again, to really project into the future what can benefit our student population and basically you look towards the next thirty-plus years. So it would be something that would become a capital asset to benefit our kids on our campus. The transportation facility needs relocated. I say at community events that we play Frogger every afternoon because I'm old enough to remember that video game. I liked it a lot when I was a kid. But we actually have to figure out how to get out on Johnstown Road every afternoon because of all the development that's taking place on Johnstown Road and our current location of our transportation facility. As the school district continues to grow and we transport more kids based upon eligibility requirements, with a larger transportation facility, we're proposing relocation, and we will talk about that tonight, to six oh five New Albany County Road, based upon land that would be donated to us by Naco's. You all become, when you be partners with us in that process and actually give us the land that would be necessary to let us be able to construct a centralized transportation facility closer to campus. And lastly is the expansion of the bus lane at the Early Learning Center. It's the only form of quote-unquote construction that we scheduled at the E L C because we found out economically, it was cheaper to add the wing onto the new school building than it was to renovate at the E L C. So as a cost-saving measure to benefit our taxpayers, we actually proposed moving all-day kindergarten into the new building location because it was cheaper than renovating the E L C. Between two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand thirty-one, we would then introduce two additional hubs. The first is the fine arts hub that would exist in front of the middle school, high school cafeteria building and middle school gym. Our current facilities in I building for the arts are inadequate based upon number of students for participation and band and orchestra in the visual arts. So we eventually, we have to create space for four hundred more students at the high school level as enrollment would continue to climb to approximately two thousand kids at the high school. This is a long-term benefit of we can fix a current capacity need, much like at our elementary level that we have at the secondary level, while enhancing program and structure opportunities for kids. So when we vacate I building to create the performing arts hub in front of the middle school, high school cafeteria building that would then connect the middle school and the high school together for the first time by having kids having the ability to stay inside instead of going outside, but they would have both options. We would construct science labs. So we have converted nine hundred square foot classrooms at the high school into science labs because of additional opportunities and offerings in the sciences, both for A P, C C P, college credit plus, on our honors courses, it's the expanded science opportunities for students based on interest and program development, depending curriculum. We need space for labs. So we're proposing actually constructing a new updated science lab in the existing I building, which is the ankle story building on Foder Road that's adjacent to the parking lot. We would add a ten thousand-ish square foot addition to the end of that building that was always envisioned to be there for future enrollment growth and actually just convert. So we actually believe that actually will increase academic opportunities for students as we look to continue to incorporate additional career pathways, more A P offerings, or honors, or college credit plus classes for students to have access to. So for the elementary building, I'm showing this tonight for the first time, but this was part of our cost savings conversations that we've had with architects today on how to maximize our money that's available in phase one for seventy-five million dollars to do everything that I just talked about as part of phase one. We can save somewhere in the neighborhood of one point three million dollars on the exterior facade of the building if we don't use the typical traditional brick, Jeffersonian Georgian looking with the columns. So we're introducing this tonight. It will become something that we start community conversations about as we approach what happens in November. To go through the actual design of the building, so there will be design charrettes or whatever we're going to call them, design meetings related to each project, but this conceptually, people have been asking me, well, you're putting this new elementary school where baseball is, how will it fit? What will it look like? So the architects are starting this work. This is an initial rendering that I talked about, but it's using the white gut board siding with, in this case, a metal roof potentially to then blend with what's happening on the corner of Swicker Woods Boulevard because this building would be adjacent to Wexner Community Pavilion and across the street from the Plain Township pool. So thematically, it fits into that area with this look. Not saying this is the absolute look. You will see I put at the top, it's not final, it's for discussion purposes only because it generates discussion about if we would choose the traditional and look at the George Jeffersonian brick with the white columns, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of one point three million dollars that we have to figure out what we would do. So we tried to maximize how we would spend the seventy-five million, and this is a concept that was presented to us that says this would fit in that area because of where it's located and the other amenities around it. So again, conceptual only, I already know because we had this conversation last week at the city in another meeting, I showed them the image and immediately, or Steve, well, that won't meet all of the architectural review board requirements. The glass has to become a conversation point, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So you already know there's design standards that have to be incorporated with the city. You have not considered those? I just tell the architects, go play and give me something that will generate a discussion. I believe this accomplishes that goal. Ms. Jenkins?
So what will appear on the November fifth, twenty twenty-four ballot? We've talked about this in the board pass to resolution that had the language for the ballot, and the ballot's going to say that it's a one hundred and thirty-five million, one hundred thirty-five million dollar bond issue over thirty-seven year period and collect four point four six mils. But we're not going to collect four point four six mils. We're only going to ask for one point four five mils be collected. And how can we do that? What we've done is split this up. Let's go back though. So the county auditor's office is putting that on the ballot because they can only look at this single issue. They look at it as though we're selling all of the money all at one time, and we have even payments over thirty-seven years. We're not doing that. We're going to split this up, as we've talked about, we have seventy-five million dollars which will be sold in spring of two thousand twenty-five, and then the remaining sixty million would be sold in spring of two thousand twenty-eight. We're splitting that up, that helps. And then we also, because we're spreading this out over on top of existing debt that is rolling off, we have village that's rolling up. So we can use that to say, like we have with permanent improvement, he's paying this amount, and that way we don't have to collect the four point four six mils. We also have had a land donation from both the city and Naco as we've talked about. The other thing that will help impact the levy collection, this is not to keep it at one point four five mils, but for those people who are paying the community sign authority or the assessment that we've been talking about, that will further reduce their tax obligation. So how much will this issue for the cost of the taxpayers? As we said, two-phase approach. The community authority expires in two thousand twenty-four, which is this December. So people are paying it now, and they won't be paying it next year. So if you're, if you're paying that community the one point four five mils that we are going to collect. If you're not paying that, you will only collect, you will only collect one point four five mils or a maximum of fifty dollars and seventy-five cents per one hundred thousand dollars of home value. That's the maximum anyone who's not paying that. Keeping in mind that eighty percent of our taxpayers pay between the forty, about twenty percent do not. And of that twenty percent, the majority of that is in Plain Township. A question that we get all the time is, does everybody pay the same taxes? And normally there, that people have an idea that if you live within the four-three-oh-five-four area code, you pay a different rate than people who live outside that area code, and that's not correct. Everyone pays the same tax rate, and that rate is applied to your value. So if you have a more expensive home, you're going to pay more taxes. If you have a lesser expensive home, you pay less taxes, but everyone in the school district pays the same tax rate. So we put together some examples just to show the math problem for different homes. The first home is one that's in the links. It has a three hundred fifty thousand dollar, two hundred, three hundred fifty thousand, two hundred dollar value. And that's based on the Franklin County Auditor's website. So you're not going to go to Zillow and look for your market value. That's typically more higher than what the county auditor praises your home at. So you're going to go to the Franklin County Auditor's office, get that value, and then divide it by one hundred thousand dollars. We said it's fifty dollars and seventy-five cents per one hundred thousand dollars of home value. So three point five times fifty seventy-five, this home that is valued at three hundred fifty thousand, two hundred dollars will see an increase in their tax bill of one hundred seventy dollars and cents. But what they're not going to see anymore is that community authority assessment. And that's two hundred twenty-one dollars, twenty cents for this home, which means they actually will see a tax reduction of one hundred thirty dollars, fifty-seven cents annually. The next property that we looked at was one in the Country Club. It is a one million seventy-four thousand, one hundred dollar home. Again, do that math, ten point seven four times fifty seventy-five, they will see an increase in their taxable five hundred forty-five dollars and six cents. They also pay the community authority, won't be paying that any longer, so four eighty-one, forty-four. It's a maximum increase for this home of sixty-three dollars and sixty-two cents annually. Then we chose a home, I don't remember where this one is, I believe it's in the township, that does not pay the community authority. It's a five hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred dollar home. You do that math, they're going to see an increase of two hundred seventy dollars, fifty cents because they're not paying the community authority assessment. Their increase will be two hundred seventy dollars and fifty cents. So how can a taxpayer find out how much issue forty is going to cost them annually based on their appraised value? Based on their appraised home value, the community design authority rolling off, if that's applicable, and then the effective one point four or five mils. And I'm working right now on a calculator, it's coming soon, that you should be able to just type your name into a cell, get your parcel number, parcel ID number, type that into a cell, and it will automatically bring up what is the new tax. Do I or don't I pay the community authority and how much that is, and then show you the net impact of that. So that's hopefully coming in the next couple of days. We're working on that. So this, this chart shows in the gold what our existing debt is. And so you can kind of see in those, the lines as they start to drop off because we're talking about expiring villages. And that's where, that's part of what we're using to leverage that village rolling off so that we don't have to continue or we don't have to ask to collect the full four point four six mils. So the darker maroon color is the phase one debt on top of that. So you can see from twenty-four to twenty-five, there is a one point four five mil increase. But because of all of these other items, that's all we're asking to collect. So that's, that continues, and then the lighter shade, lighter, kind of that's paper, whatever, but the lighter shade is then the second phase when we add that in. And you can see the top line, the top gray line shows what the revenue that we expect to collect is. And so in two of those years, you can see that we aren't collecting enough money to pay the debt that will be in, will be due in those years. But we're not going to increase that tax because, or the tax village because we do have reserves in our bond retirement fund, and we are going to use some of those reserves to pay that down so that we don't have to collect any more money. So that you can see in the first, through two thousand thirty, we're not collecting more than the additional one point four or five mils, and then it starts to drop off. And after two thousand thirty-two, you'll see even more of that drop off. So what's rolling off? So we have a nineteen ninety-seven levy that was passed for nineteen point four nine million. It expires in December of two thousand twenty-four, which means the authority expires, you're still going to collect it in twenty, or still pay it in two thousand twenty-five. So we will still collect that in the calendar year two thousand twenty-five. But at the end of twenty-five, two point four mils is rolling off. And if you look at this, if you look at the graph, when you're looking at twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four to twenty, or twenty-five to twenty-six, you can see the drop in that village in the gold. And that's, that's part of that two point four nine, we're saying, please keep paying that. Twenty twenty is a twenty-nine point seven three mil mod issue. It expires in two thousand twenty-seven. And that will collect through two thousand twenty-eight, and that's a point six three mil reduction. And then two thousand one is a thirty-eight point eight million dollar issue, expires in two thousand twenty-nine, will collect in two thousand thirty, and that's a point eight two mil decrease. So again, you can see that throughout the chart when you're looking at the gold and how that debt is rolling off. This chart, what we wanted to look at was the tax that we pay for one hundred thousand dollars in home value compared to other districts, and what is the return on investment that we're getting? And you can see that we're about the fourth lowest percentage, one point three percent. So we're paying less than most of the other school districts for one hundred thousand dollars in home value, which is an incredible return of investment. The one note on this chart is to note that Bexley City Schools has an actual point seven five percent school district income tax that is not factored into this. So they actually would be a bit higher. This shows that presuming the levy passes, where do we move to? And we move up to one point three five percent. Keeping it this, but this does not show, again, Bexley would be higher because they have the point seven five. The point seven.
Patrick, do you want to hit the screen?
Click OK on that. That shouldn't end. So what this chart doesn't include again is the Bexley School District income tax, but also Bexley, Granville, Grandview, Hilliard, and Southwestern all have levies on the ballot. And so we did not presume that they pass, but if those pass, then they too will be increased. And so I think we'll drop down, back down to four or even lower. And so again, an amazing return on investment.
So beyond the financials and the information on the why and the what, we're going to just talk about the work that we've done in the course of the last couple of weeks at your board meeting on August twenty-sixth. So we've continued to meet with the architects. We are working on draft timelines. I have an updated timeline that I just received back from the architects that we're working through as we speak. Ongoing review of the draft budget sheet for Construction Council because that will be used in the R F P. So we are working with Construction Council to finalize. The R F P and the budget sheet has to be incorporated into that. So Mr. Shore and his team are actively working with us and our partners to finalize that, so it will be ready to go in late in October. We're meeting with the city of New Albany and Naco. We've continued our conversations related to the requirements for proposed based on softball field for civil engineering, the specific egress requirements, the protected requirements related to creek, everything else from watershed. I mean, it's been really interesting listening to some of these things that we have to take into consideration to ensure that the civil engineers can come up with a site plan. So we are meeting again this Thursday, both with the city and with Naco to continue that work. And we will continue to meet weekly until it gets finalized, to have some understanding of what that potentially looks like, that I'll be able to talk about in detail at a board meeting. Naco did provide access to a shared drive or shared network service to get additional site information that we needed for the proposed land donations, both for transportation and for baseball and softball. We've met with the city and with Naco to go through that information. We looked at design or site layout options. We've looked at utilities. We've looked at restrictions. Most recently, we had a conversation related to a TransCanada gas line that actually runs through the transportation proposed property to understand what TransCanada's utility requirements would specifically be for us to build a transportation center there. So we're very much into the weeds of understanding these requirements because all of them contribute to probable costs and finalizing the budget sheet that we need specifically to give to the construction manager at risk candidates in the request for proposals. Soil borings have been scheduled for both sites, and civil engineering is underway specifically at transportation. We did have a meeting with the city of New Albany to talk about Swicker Woods Boulevard and the partnership opportunities that exist there with the location of the new school and where we're proposing it goes. It will have an impact on traffic flow and the design specifically of Swicker Woods Boulevard and its exit onto Foder. So the city is now in collaboration, partnership, working conversations with us to talk about what would be the city's responsibility versus what will become the school district's responsibility specifically in that area based upon the traffic flow and egress, ingress and egress out of that location. We've continued to work with Construction Council, so we are working with Matt Sigoni at Squire's Patton Box. He is the construction council that we're using again within the school district. We did finalize, we published the R F Q. The legal notice did appear in the Columbus Dispatch. The R F Q request for questions are due by September twentieth at noon. So that's coming up upon us this week, and then the R F Q submission due date is October seventh. By law, it must be posted for no less than thirty days. So we will close that on October seventh, a week later, by October fourteenth. We will shortlist at least up to three firms as the current conversation to go through this process for requests for proposals to actually seek C M R services, construction manager at risk services for the school district for the construction projects. So we are on time schedule, and then the R F P will be published in October with a due date in November. So we're marching forward with the intent of having everything aligned to knowing when we know our outcome on November fifth, that we have everything else staged and ready to go to prepare you for your November Board of Education meeting where specific action plans will be presented. So hopefully, by our current plan, by November's Board of Education meeting that we have, we would actually have finished the R F P process and be hiring the construction manager at risk at your November Board of Education meeting, as well as finalizing the architect and engineering agreement that are currently being worked on also by legal council. So we are moving forward on many projects in preparation for the outcome of November fifth. At the town hall meetings, we are talking about this information. We're also giving people access to where they can go to learn more information. So our district website has the future growth elements. You can go to the link or the Q R code. The New Albany Community Authority, if you want to understand the history or if you want to go look at your current information on the Frankton County Auditor site until Ms. Jenkins successfully posts the calculator. So as soon as the calculator becomes active, it actually will do all this work for you. So we're trying to make it as easy as possible to discover what specific impact issue forty will have for our residents to support our schools. The town hall meetings will continue, we have another one this Thursday at the intermediate school. Everyone is invited, it's open to the public, it's just basically just the facts, which is really what our presentation's been this evening. In accordance with regulations published by the Auditor of State's Office and ORC, we are only allowed to provide facts and information. The school district under no circumstances will influence or persuade anyone related to issue forty. We are allowed to talk about the facts all day long and that's what we're doing. So that is the summary of tonight's presentation. Again, issue forty will appear on the November fifth twenty four election ballot based upon action by your Board of, our Board of Education, meaning all of you. Ms. Jenkins, I are happy to answer any questions or receive comments you may have.
Jenkins, could you just remind people why the community authority amount is relevant to the school district? The roll off of that amount?
So it's relevant that we don't receive the money, but the one point, it's, it's an average of one point nine five mils. Everybody's paying a different amount, but it's relevant because we're asking for one point four or five mils and that's rolling off, therefore it's less of an impact to the taxpayer.
Right. The original use is.
Oh, it was originally used to build the middle school, high school and for the school district. About three percent of the money was used to help pay for part of the fire department building and a truck. And then the rest of it was for infrastructure, roadways, et cetera.
Right. But about eighty percent was school, correct? And the millage rolling off that you presented on slide twelve is all our millage?
Correct.
All the chip millage, so we're not leveraging any outside millage. What are your debt factors?
That's correct, it is how all the schools.
So for the folks who have not been paying the community authority, it's a heavier lift, yes, this issue forty. However, you know, I would challenge people to think about the fact that they've been benefiting from all of the funds that have been raised through the community authority, which purchased our school building and a new fire truck and those things that, you know, everyone is still benefiting from. The other question I had is, so for, for one of your examples, it was sixty dollars a year increase approximately. So would someone be able to count on that would remain the same over the thirty seven years?
Yes. And that's because House Bill nine twenty doesn't let you collect more than what that is. And we also have millages rolling off, so it wouldn't be more than that.
Any other question?
I would say the way that bond issues are different than an operating levy is that every year the county auditor is looking at what is the payment in that year? And they're looking at what money, how much money do you have in your bond retirement fund? So I have this much money, the one point four or five mils would collect X and here's my payment. And so there are actually years when they're looking at that millage and because we might have more, they only let you have about thirty percent of your debt payment in your bond retirement fund. So if there's more than that in there, they will use that even without us asking them to and reduce the millage even more. So if you remember when we passed the first permanent improvement levy for one point two five mils, we were supposed to have two and a half pull off because national tax money or bond retirement fund money, they actually reduced three mils instead of two and a half. So I would say it's no more than.
Right, no.
We're live again.
Okay.
Just place that.
Or your question.
This is the maximum that we would collect, this would give us everything that we need in the plan if we were to benefit from any other partnerships or generous donations. We would not have to sell all the debts, we'd actually, that would lower the impact to the taxpayer. As the maximum, if we have no other partners or funding at all, we can do all of this with just the fifty dollars hundred thousand dollar a year to get the entire plan.
Yes.
How's your authority?
The authority, but we don't have, we don't end up needing that much.
And we wouldn't. And so when we get that great tax calculator, we will put it on the website.
Yes.
I will send it out.
Because it's facts and information.
That's exciting. That would be very helpful. All right, Superintendent Sawyers, do you want to move on to?
So we're going to transition now, I'm going to invite Mr. Taylor, who's the Director of Assessment and Accountability, to come to the podium. We're going to do the release, the official release of the two thousand twenty three twenty four local report card and update on the continuous improvement plan, so. Like a three second delay, that's actually has discovered with me, so. So I've asked Mr. Taylor to go through the official release of the local report card information that came out last Friday. So it was released on Friday the thirteenth, one day later than was anticipated by the Department of Education and workforce. So Greg's going to walk through that and then we'll talk about the impact of that information and then into the two thousand twenty four twenty five continuous improvement plan. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, thanks for having me again tonight to deliver more great news. Today, we're going to talk about our purpose, the report card in general, our official results, and then I'm going to hand it off to Michael to continue on the continuous improvement plan. Starting off, our purpose as always is to create a culture of accountability that achieves the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student. With that in mind, we have the order for card data as a celebration of what the work that's going on in the district. And yeah, so as I mentioned last time, A to B two, replace the A to F letter grades with a star system. We are obviously shooting for four or five stars, which is exceeding and then significantly exceeding those ratings. The last time I was here, we knew that we were going to get five stars and everything, but progress wasn't up yet. We did receive five stars in progress, so we are one of eighteen districts in the state to receive five stars in every component and overall. Additionally, now we have some more data because we can see everybody else's. I can give you some, some high level ranking, or not rankings, but high level kind of stats on where we are. So our PI was thirtieth this year in the state, second in Franklin County, behind Grandview. We're top five percent in the state for overall PI, overall math PI, ELA PI, third grade proficiency, eighth grade math proficiency, eighth grade ELA proficiency, government proficiency. We have the fourth highest gifted PI in the state.
Can you say all that one more?
Yeah, sure. So, yeah, so thirtieth highest PI in the state. Second in Franklin County, Grandview is the one, and Grandview Heights is the one I'm up against. We are top five percent in the state for all these categories. So our overall PI, our math PI, our ELA PI, and then proficiency in third grade ELA, eighth grade math, eighth grade ELA, government.
Wow.
So that's outstanding. And then our gifted PI is fourth in the state among every district. So again, we kind of knew that we're going to be in the top two percent based on the denominator for PI for gifted, but this is just certification. We also have the highest proficiency in Franklin County for a couple of subjects, including third grade ELA, sixth grade math and seventh grade math, and we are second in several others. So we were in the top two or three for almost all seven. In progress, we have outstanding top five percent growth index and effect size as well. We're the seventh highest gifted growth index in the state, so our PI was super high and our value add was super high. So they're performing high and they're also growing, which is outstanding as well. We have the ninth highest math PI, or sorry, math growth index. And then with the top four percent for the ELA, so we're performing very high and everything in progress. Gap closing, we're in the third highest gap closing component grade in the state this year. So I think Marion Local and New Knoxville are ahead of us. So that's outstanding too, it shows the hard work that everyone is doing and the stressors, that teachers, principals and everybody you're feeling at the building level pick off. Graduation continues to be a strong point for us. And then early literacy, we rank highly again, we're eleventh highest in state in early literacy, highest in Franklin County.
I just want to echo the gap one because of what we went through in the education world related to the thing called COVID and the gaps that it created for students, the fact that we have closed gaps to become the third highest school district in the state in relationship to looking specifically at those learning gaps of students is significant. Because our teachers and administrators and faculty and staff that are involved in an entire process every single day have done an incredible job in looking specifically at individual students. And as work goes back to our statement of purpose, each student and understanding what can we do to help them academically and developmentally. So the fact that tonight's the big debut with Greg and we're sending out a staff communication because we haven't shared this level of data yet with the staff, so we've been mining. So that's Greg's role since Friday, so this is what he spent his weekend doing in preparation for today. Now that we have access, because we haven't had access to the state data, now we do because it's officially been released by the department.
Like I mentioned earlier, we were one of eighteen public school districts to receive all fives. Another thing to note is that we were one of six districts in the state to have received only five star ratings in all components and overall since that A to F system went away in twenty twenty two. So that's another outstanding congratulations to us and this other five districts. So those are Aurora, Chagrin Falls, Madeira, Solon and Upper Arlington as well.
Yeah, there's only six school districts in the state that have earned consistent five stars in all components and the overall letter grade or replacement of letter grade with five stars since twenty twenty two. And we're in good company because it's Solon, Aurora, Chagrin Falls.
U N.
Upper Arlington, us and.
Here.
Madeira. The great list.
They can't have anymore, so. At the building level, the ELC this year did get a four star, last year they were a five star. The ELC is in a unique situation, they're only rated in the gap closing component. So if you dig deeper into the gap closing component, they're only related in a small number of the ten indicators or measures within the gap closing component. This year they were only measured in twos. Last year they were measured in three components. So last year they got a five star because the English learner growth metric, they've met the minimum end size, which is fifteen. Number of students who are ELS who were enrolled for what the state defines as the full academic year, which is basically first week of October through March thirty first. Last year, however, they only had thirteen students. So if there were two more kids on that list, they would have gotten a five, but as such, they only got a four. At the primary school, the primary school got all fives, so we knew this going into this week because they didn't get a progress score. They're one of sixty eight schools, school buildings in the entire state to receive all fives. There's about three thousand, a little bit over three thousand buildings that were ranked that are rated and ranked this year for PI and other subjects. Their PIs in the top five percent of all buildings, tenth in Franklin County, there's two hundred seventy seven schools in Franklin County. And then they were eighth among elementary buildings and there's a hundred seventy seven elementary buildings in the county. Their ELA performance index was in the top one percent in the state out of all buildings. That's outstanding and are the highest in Franklin County. They were the top three percent in their ELA proficiency, so we kind of need that based on what I said earlier. And gap closing, they got a hundred percent on that component, so they couldn't get any better. They were tied to the first, I guess, with thirty one other, or thirty other buildings, one of thirty one, which is outstanding. And then they also have the ninth highest early literacy component in Franklin County. So again, that's another outstanding celebration. They also have the best, the highest improving K three literacy measure within early literacy. So that's how you move kids from being off track to on track. So we're moving kids who are off track to on track at the primary school. At the intermediate school, they got a four star in progress, so that's what was missing the last time we looked. They got five stars in achievement gap closing and then they kept a five star overall. Students at the intermediate school who are accelerated, there's over a hundred of them taking the seventh grade math test, a hundred percent proficient. Their overall PI was in the top five percent again in the state among all buildings and it was tenth among Franklin County Elementary Schools as well, if you serve an elementary age student. They had the seventh highest overall math PI in the county and their gifted PI was top two percent in the state. So they were another top two percenter that went into the calculation for the max. They also had ELA growth in the top five percent, so they're growing status. At the middle school, all fives again, so they were also one of the sixty eight in the state and one of nine in Franklin County, along with the primary school to receive all five stars. Their PI was also in the top five percent overall in the state, it was also in the top three percent among school serving middle school students. We knew that this was going to be a big one, we just didn't know where they were going to fall, but they had the third highest building PI for gifted students in the state. So only two other buildings in the state had a higher PI. And they also have eighth highest gifted value added. So that goes back to, we have students who are gifted and doing really well and they're also growing more, at least more than they should. They were the top percent for all their value added math and then they had a hundred percent proficiency in their accelerated students. So nearly two hundred students in algebra one, over a hundred students in geometry and twenty five students taking biology, all of those students were proficient. At the high school level, they got a five star overall as well, progress was a four star. They were one of five high schools in Franklin County to receive an achievement star rating of five. And they had the fourth highest PI among high schools in Franklin County as well. Devon Jerome, Upper Arlington, Grandview Heights were above. And then Bexley was the fifth high school to also get five stars of achievement. They had a top five ELA PI in the state for any high school and they were the fourth in the county with the same school that I just mentioned before. And they had the top high school gifted PI in the county. So trending the entire district that are gifted students are performing outstanding. We have seventeen hundred accountable gifted students that were, I go over these calculations. So we have a lot more gifted students than if you look at the people who are leading us. They're in the low hundreds or not even hundreds, so it's outstanding where you can move the needle with seventeen hundred students.
Any comments or questions related to the data results that Mr. Taylor shared before I switch into the CIP?
Michael, would you see if the challenges for us moving forward in order to, you know, maintain this level of performance and even build on it? I know, you know, this is hard earned every year.
So I think it, because we've talked about this from an administrative perspective and it's the data mining activity, both at the district level that we're doing, that Greg just talked about as specific examples, but more importantly, taking it to the building level, to the grade level, to the classroom level, to the student level and understanding how do you create a map that illustrates here's where Johnny is today? And I'm looking at Mrs. Smith and she's shaking her head, but Johnny just came to first grade or Billy's in second grade and Suzie's in third grade. How do they do in first and second and where do we have to take them in third to ensure that the gap continues to close? But at the same time, they excel academically for achievement purposes and at the same time demonstrate progress that they're exceeding the growth expectation. That's the hard part, that's the secret sauce where the principals, classroom teachers and working with everybody at the building level for support services that help students. So some kids might get double dips, some kids might get triple dips. So you go to English Language Arts twice a day, you're getting hit with math two or three times a day. Literacy is king or queen at the elementary level and the work that Mrs. Laverro's doing and Mrs. Smith is doing specifically with Mr. Emery. And Tara Boggo as our literacy coordinator is incredible because that's where it all starts. It's creating the successful foundation for teachers to have the professional knowledge that's necessary to build the tool chest of their skills to bring that to life for kids in the classroom. And it's not a one size fits all and that's what New Albany does extremely well is to figure out at the classroom level with each student, what do we have to do to provide intervention or enrichment to where Greg went on the gifted side to take them deeper and demonstrate that they have that skill set to continue to grow. But it's the individualized levels, what I would say is the answer. I don't care where you're at in the school district, it's figuring out how do I help Jen, Paul, Debbie and Mark do what's necessary to grow and demonstrate their academic success in the classroom? And the related services come with it, so regardless of special education, English language learner, occupational therapy, speech therapy. therapy, physical therapy, all that stuff comes as the total package that's put together for that student. And it's, it's hard because they're mapped differently to find that success. But we have to keep doing that. That's, and really it goes back to, we talked about, you heard me say it, it's a guaranteed viable curriculum, that we dictate the blood, the how is the art pedagogically of the teacher to bring that to life with a team of people supporting that student to find what he or she's
And as you think about us growing and potentially new students coming in all throughout different grades, how do we handle students coming in at, at higher levels and trying to make sure we get them up to this level of performance?
It goes back to creating a digitalized plan. So we have students arriving every single day in the school district, our English language learner population is growing, our special education population is growing. We are a magnet in some respects of people coming here because of the services that we're providing. We have to continue to figure that out. It becomes hard and I'm looking at Lori because from a staffing perspective, some of those positions are not easy to fill. They become challenging depending on the time of year that that's somewhat when it would happen as to what we have to do to meet the needs of that child and the services that are provided. So we have to keep doing that. But it's creating the individualized plan as we continue to grow, staffing will grow over time, not immediately. There'll be some restructuring that happens with what happens with issue forty of the twenty, two thousand twenty-four campus master plan, but long term, as we end up with over, you know, right now, over ten years, a thousand more students, there's additional support and services that are going to be required for those kids, just like it is today. Our ELL service is English language learner services for students. It's growing. I mean, we had students on the first day of school that arrived to school that speak no English, that we had to come up with immediate solutions for. And it wasn't just Mrs. Smith's building, it was also the middle school and the high school, the intermediate school and the ELC. Every building was touched this year with a unique circumstance that we've had to figure out solutions for very quickly. Unfortunately, with translation services, partnerships with the families, we put solutions in place to start that process that's necessary to ensure we can meet their needs. Lori, anything I missed?
I think you covered it. It is, it is the work of our teachers and all of the people sitting behind us supporting them that makes this happen, absolutely.
It's not easy to your point. This is hard.
Yeah.
It's really hard. But we're very good at what we do, which is why we chose education. We have a phenomenal staff and they work hard every single day.
Do I know we're celebrating at homecoming? Is there anything we can do at the building level to celebrate all of this achievement?
Yeah, we can come up with some ideas. We'll talk to the principals. I'm sure they want something. Your hot break is what I heard.
Yes, I think it's so important to recognize it and just, you know, internalize it within the achievement.
I just want to say again, thank you for the report out and it's obviously fantastic. One of eighteen with five stars across the board, one of six with five stars across the board since we've been measured that way. So again, thank you to everyone, Mr. Sawyers, all the way through the district. Everybody has contributed to that and really appreciate all the effort that's gone into to our kids' education. So thank you. I also have to fortunately remind us that we are aspiring to become the best rated public school district in Ohio. So how we get one of one, you know, that's, that's our goal. Just a couple of macro things I heard when you were going through the discussion was really around gifted is, sounds like we're knocking out of the park. We're top two, top three in different things. Gap closing, five stars across the board. And then I see progress as maybe where we have a one star that we could pick up here or there. And it's just more of a question and I, again, I am not the educator that we have, that's why I'm just on the board. I don't pretend. But the progress component, what, what does that really look at? Is that the across, I'm reading it, the component looks closely at growth of all students who are making a best of the past performance. So we have to look at every student as opposed to maybe the gap closing is just looking at student subgroups. So is, is that the opportunity? I'm just
Yeah, so, so gap closing looks at value added data as well. So value added data goes with the progress, progress data. It does say all students, when you look at, for example, the intermediate school, there, there are students in the intermediate school that do not count for the intermediate school but do count for the district because they were recently accelerated. So the intermediate school, because of our acceleration, is going to take a minor hit because of that, but it's not going to hit our overall district data. So they have a four star, but those same students, for whatever reason it is, we can ask SAS and they won't tell us that's who does the value added ratings or ratings. They will not count that accelerated student in their first year of acceleration. So we're missing any accelerated student in math the first time they're accelerated. So we have to keep that in mind when we're looking at that kind of data. There are caveats in there, we have a four star, they're a learning center. There's an explanation that we can't fix. That's what this rule is from the department. We're looking at progress in particular, the value added data, it is just looking at the student's progress from up to three years really, they say from year to year. So it's basically at the most simplest level where they're starting first year, what's, this is simple, like I said, you're ranking them from one to one hundred ten thousand in the state. Where are they next year? Are they, do they keep the same rating or go up or down? They kept the same rating, then they're kind of, they met their growth. Like I said, it's an oversimplification, but that's kind of how it's explained for that data. So we're trying to move kids beyond where they were. And it does get difficult when you have higher performing students year over year. That's just something that the, the higher performing districts deal with. It's something across the state that everyone's looking at.
That's helpful background. And again, I don't want my words to be taken the wrong way. We aspire to have five stars across the board and highest PI possible, but I recognize there's lots of different factors that go in both the grading system as well as the student population that's shifting as we grow. So I just want to again say thank you and again, just remind everybody as well that this has been a journey and we really want to thank two of our sawyers and all of our staff for everything that's been, these numbers we've got used to be top six in these categories. This hasn't always been the case, always been a very good district, but as President Kalanowski said, how do we continue to sustain, deliver for our kids? And so thanks for being part of that.
One of the challenges of the ELC that we're just getting the students sort of anew, we don't have a lot of data on them before they come to school. Is that what things, progress component particularly challenging? The gap closing?
Yeah, I can explain. So they're not taking a state test. So you don't start taking state tests until third grade, you don't start getting a progress rating until fourth grade.
Right.
So when you look at the gap closing areas, almost all of them are based on whether or not you're taking a state test. And at the kindergarten level, our EL students aren't taking the OALP, but we need to meet that threshold to get there. So that really only leaves gifted identification and services and which we start identifying in second grade essentially, which is just totally the norm among education. And then our product has a key as a indicator. So there's not much we can do to change that, it's just based on our grade band. Working at the department, I know that when we're talking, when we're framing report card reform, we have those early primary schools in mind because they're the ones that are kind of the odd ducks getting a half a rating for one component and then we're producing an overall rating. It's only, you know, twenty schools in the state, but it's, it's something that I know they're working on to try to make it a little fairer. But that's why, there's, there's no, there's not data, state administrative data available to actually calculate a rating.
So in other words, we're doing a great job, the state just isn't capable of telling us.
Exactly. They're not capable of measuring it.
The other thing that I think is important about the ratings is that, you know, it is amazing really, the level of data that educators get to use for our students, tremendous, but it, at the, at the core, I think why we are successful is that we have teachers and building leaders who develop relationships with teachers, teachers who develop relationships with students and parents that this, the payoff is this, right? So the, the relationship component of what we do as educators is vitally important and it's not, it's not really measured in this per se, except, except the result is, in my mind at least, confirmation of the recognition of the value of those relationships and the effectiveness and authenticity of them, which again, I think it's, it's an incredible accomplishment because all of this takes time and discipline on the part of our teachers and staff and on the part of our students and their families. So it's really, I think, something that they, you know, as a community, sharing the success or the pride in the, in the outcome is, is more, we're, we're great because a significant number of people have chosen to help make us great.
I would just like to add my comments to add work.
All right, so speaking of partnership, Paul started to go down, he had the perfect lead in and then, so it's fine, I'm going to go back to it. When he looks at continuous improvement and that really is the expectation within the school district. We set a vision through the Board of Education several years ago to talk about a commitment to excellence and looking at how do we become or remain the best rated public school district in the state of Ohio? And we don't take that lightly. We work every single year to figure out how do we continuously improve? And we look at this from the accountability perspective and accountability can be a very negative term and you've heard me say that before in education. We try to make it a positive understanding that as individuals, we have a responsibility to try to hold ourselves accountable to go back to meeting the academic developmental needs of kids. So you've specifically established a continuous improvement plan to do that. As employees, we're accountable for implementing research-based practices, including the rigorous and aligned curriculum. So that is the what, the common assessments we hear often about. We do assess children to try to give ourselves benchmarks to understand what's working, what's not and what we need to do differently because sometimes more of the same can be insanity. So we need to do something different if this child's not responding to what's being implemented. Focused instruction is excellent within the classroom and the data-driven decisions. So we take this mess called data and try to do the mining activities at the classroom level and at the student level to understand what we specifically can do to better improve meeting their academic developmental needs, but at the same time, hold ourselves to be fiscally responsible as a school district because that is the expectation of our community. So for tonight, benchmarks one, two and three, we talked about these at the last board meeting. I am recommending the academic achievement goals specifically for the school district to be the same as earn a district performance index result of ninety-five percent or greater. It's literally the equivalent of five and a half stars, ninety percent is five stars in the state of Ohio. We're looking for the same amount of stretch, our cohort of kids changes, the number of students in the school district changes, the needs of who is identified changes, but we still need to hold ourselves accountable to having a high level of achievement to demonstrate as a school district, we're serving those students. The growth piece, going back to specifically the progress component that Paul was asking about, recommending it is still four stars or greater on the local report card as a district. Again, we will continue to look at the opportunities that exist within there, but to where Greg went in the calculation, there are some things in the actual calculation that are determined by the state that we cannot change. So I cannot change how they go back and look specifically at a student and what's happening to Shell's building, right or wrong, at the ELC level when there is no state assessment that does that and looking at that three-year growth pattern and what in one year she might have an end size of a cohort of students that constitutes a population for English language learners and the next year she does not. So she has fifteen kids one year, she has thirteen kids the next. It's going to count one year, it won't count the next. I can't control that, it's the number of students that building at that point in time. All right, the, we're having issues with Zoom tonight, so I apologize. Becky's trying to figure it out. For gap closing, I am recommending since the last Board of Education meeting, we changed the component rating from four stars to five stars on gap closure for benchmark number three. For benchmark number four, we have not changed this since the last Board of Education meeting. So five stars on the graduation rate, fifty percent or more of the class of twenty-five will earn an honors diploma and the data collection by Ohio Department of Education workforce. And then again, to educate families about the graduation changes that will occur in two thousand twenty-six specifically related to the six types of honors diplomas. So I think this is a great thing to add to the CIP because it will become educational for our families in the long changing this department officially beginning with the class of two thousand twenty-six. Class of five will earn an industry-based credential or complete a pre-apprenticeship program. As reported in the graduation data, given the work we're doing, career pathways, the graduation seals and everything that Dr. Mamiya is leading at the secondary level with Dr. Russell at the high school and Mr. Freeman at the middle school, this is an opportunity again to educate our families to understand specifically, what are those graduation requirements? How can I earn certain seals? What constitutes a pre-apprenticeship program? What constitutes earning an industry-based credential? Again, it's a career pathway that's available for students and we've worked hard to diversify this pathway at the high school so that we're meeting the needs of all students and projecting opportunities for them to meet the new requirements of the state that leads to college or career after high school, specifically in our pathways. The one that's changed the most that I emailed you about is benchmark number five. So based upon continued input from the Board of Education since our last meeting and work with the administrative team, we will still do the surveys, I didn't change those. Students will have three, staff has two, parents have one. To specifically work of support, student belonging, the substantive use and student agency and then the staff climate that we do in the spring. So we are part of the grant with Martha Holt Jennings for student agency, AKA student voice, specifically looking at those elements within the school district that requires us to participate in survey work within the school district, both for faculty, staff, students and parents. We will analyze the survey results to inform and enhance school culture because that is the goal of this benchmark. Mrs. Lofton is leading the work associated with the citizen advisory recommendations from last school year to complete the root cause analysis of student belonging by December. And then at the same time, as an enhancement to look at student belonging in the school district, we're piloting the work that she recently shared with the building principals related to the house systems. So the house systems are coming back to the school district, kindergarten through twelfth grade. And Mrs. Lofton will be reporting on that with the principals as the school year progresses. We want to implement strategies to increase parent community engagement and knowledge and current and future needs of our school district based on court input. We were asked, okay, what does that look like? So I'm giving you some examples. We're actually going to start this school year by implementing a two thousand twenty-four annual community update. So I just shared that this morning, it's gone to print, emailed to all residents within the school district to talk about what happened during the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school district accountability, both academically and financially, with town hall meetings. Currently working on listening sessions have been discussed. I'm going to compare those to your coffee and conversations that the board did. So I left them more generic just to call them listening sessions because they may not be called coffee sessions, depending on the time of day that we would host them. So we will talk about that through President Kalanowski with Board of Education members to structure that throughout the school year. Our work with PTO meetings in the school district and Mrs. Fuller is the board liaison for that. And then community events, because we're at all kinds of community events that all of us participate in and it's an opportunity to engage our public. Most recently, Mr. Wilson was an example of that. So he was at Friday Night Lights and he was mingling with the crowd prior to the game, went out to watch the kids and support the kids on the field, came back to mingle during halftime when everybody's coming out of the bleacher stands, went back and watched the game and then mingled again at the end. So it's just having access to all of us to have conversation. That's the intent, to basically look at engagement strategies. And then lastly, Mrs. Kalanowski and I were having this conversation to talk about other ways that we can enhance community and business partnerships because of the work we're specifically doing in pre-apprenticeship and industry-based credential. But we have other areas across the school district that represent really community engagement and business partnerships. Examples could be senior seminar, industry-based credentials, the community service hour requirement for graduation for the twenty-five hours. Entrepreneur Day is a great example of working with businesses at the local level at the elementary school and then our work with Concorde Counseling. So we were trying to come up with other ways that we could think or imagine how we can expand those partnerships to benefit kids in the school district. And lastly is benchmark number six. So Mrs. Jenkins was working on this with Mrs. Fuller after our last Board of Education meeting to talk specifically about the wording and the intent of what this benchmark represents and is to maximize efficiencies. So as a school district, year over year, we've met this goal in trying to find efficiencies. Most recently, it's been few human resources and dotted positions that weren't filled. That's not our intent year over year. We would like to find efficiencies within the organization or structure, things that we could start doing or stop doing that would generate an efficiency that results in a cost savings. That is the intent of this goal. So we're going to now put that into words and make it the focus. So it's not about what I would interpret based on our conversation. So it's not about what I would interpret based on our conversations to be cuts. We're not in the marketplace per se just to make cuts for the sake of making cuts. We're very judicious in how we use taxpayer dollars within the school district, that practice will continue. But we have a responsibility to our taxpayers to see, is there anything we could do more efficiently? Because we are a $100 million business, so are there $798,000 round numbers of efficiencies we can identify? I think we have a responsibility to try to demonstrate that to our taxpayers. With that, I'm gonna take questions or comments related to the 24-25 CIP. I will remind you, pursuant to the negotiated agreements in the school district, we have to publish to all faculty and staff in the school district by September 30th what the academic goal is. We typically do that through the adoption of the CIP, which I put on as an agenda this evening, because candidly, I forgot to put on your regular agenda. I apologize. So we're adding it as an agenda this evening to account for the fact that you actually take action to adopt it. Questions or comments?
I think the opportunity for community and business partnerships is a tremendous way for us to have people that don't necessarily have children or don't have children in the district any longer, not yet. Businesses that don't have that parent-child relationship to the district to have a stake in what we do. And I know people speak very proudly of how well their district does. And employers, businesses in the community can feel the same way. And that can help them attract employees, but if at a minimum, it just sort of sets a tone for how we want our community to look. That's however I can help in that endeavor. I love to do it.
Dr. Mias took. Any other questions or comments related to CIP?
Michael, so remind me, how do we, how do you keep us honest in terms of meeting some of these?
We'll do a mid-year update somewhere around January, February, when we come back from winter break. So we'll schedule it based upon the board calendar that you and I have worked on. So we haven't done that yet, it's on my list of stuff for you. But we will schedule the mid-year updates to talk about where we're at, what we specifically have done in each goal, to kind of forecast where we're going and how fast we're going.
Yeah, I'm really excited to hear about the house system and how that process is going.
Megan's ahead of us, so she's probably the first shining star for it, but the intermediate schools underway and ready to roll. So she's, but she's been doing this work and research and study for two years. So Megan's ahead of the other buildings, but that's why we're taking our time to do this.
Okay. The other couple mental notes I was making is like the listening sessions, you and I had talked about maybe having like a theme. We just don't get great participation, so we were thinking, and we can discuss this at another board meeting, when John's here as well, but you know, maybe and John, you and I have talked about this too, like maybe it'd be better to have a specific topic that we're there to talk about and people who are interested engage with us in that way. And then I think we probably need to put some structure to the community events. If board members are gonna be involved in community events, we probably need to figure out, you know, who and when and what. So those are probably a couple of my action items.
I agree.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the board on it? Looks great.
Excellent, Tegix, Mr. Kramer.
Is it live, Kent? If I brought him up, I did test them too, just to make sure.
In this board meeting early. Mr. Kramer, we're ready.
Good evening, Superintendent Sawyer, President Kalnaski, members of the board. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to provide a safety and security update on a new and very exciting system that we are implementing this year called Syntetix Crisis Alert. As always, we want to start with our purpose to create a culture of accountability that achieves the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student. And following this purpose, we are committed to maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for our students, staff, and community. So in this light, we are continuously looking for ways in which we can increase the security of our campus, which led us to this new system that we are implementing within our schools. So today, I want to outline why we are implementing Syntetix Crisis Alert, first of all, and then explain what the system can actually do in our environment. Highlight the two alerts that all staff members can use in the event of an emergency and describe our implementation process and kind of where we are right now. So to begin, I think it's important to explain the school environment when an incident occurred before the implementation of Syntetix Crisis Alert. So in our schools, we do not have panic buttons installed in our classrooms or cafeterias. And the majority of our staff members inside of our buildings do not carry radios. They are mainly restricted to our administration, our nurses, and in some cases, our front office secretaries. Therefore, when an incident occurs and the staff member needs to call for help, they previously would have to get to their classroom phone or take out their cell phone and find the correct number, or simply call out for help. Syntetix Crisis Alert now empowers every staff member to quickly alert a response team at their school with a simple click of a button. This drastically increases the speed of communication and allows responders at each building to intervene faster, resulting in keeping students and staff safer than we have before. So what is it? Syntetix Crisis Alert, it's a wearable communication device that all staff members in the district will have to quickly notify a response team at each building in case of emergency. It is a simple, cost-effective way for us to increase the safety and security of our campus with a simple click of a button. The system is fairly simple and straightforward, as you can go to the next slide. It consists of individual staff badges, strobes in our classroom and our hallways, gateways on the outside of our buildings to both receive the signal from the badges and send the signal to the strobes, and beacons to extend the signal. I brought an example of a stroke with you that I put in front of you, Ms. Kalnaski, and then and badges. And so those syntetic badges are not active, so you can push that button and see what that feels like when a staff member calls for an alert. Crisis Alert is a location-based notification system, so what does that mean? It is activated, it knows where you are when you activate an alert. The district consists of six sites, so each school building is a site, and the sixth site consists of the administrative office, the annex, and McCoy. When a staff member goes between sites and calls an alert, their badge will notify a response team closest to them, increasing communication and lowering response time to an incident. Additionally, the system is created to extend the signal outside of the building to cover areas such as parking lots and our stadium. So if we have an incident and an event outside of school hours, the system can be used by all staff. So using the badge, all staff members can call for two types of alerts. The first alert for the majority of incidents is a simple three-button click, following the phrase, "I need help." Examples of when a staff member would push the button three times is when, for incidents that they can't resolve themselves. So we're talking about medical emergency with themselves or with a student, a student altercation, a student that's in crisis, or maybe a staff member sees a suspicious person on campus, they're gonna push their button three times, "I need help," and it will instantly send an alert to a response team closest to them. The second type of alert that the system empowers all staff members to activate in the event of a direct campus threat is a lockdown at their site, following the phrase, "We need help." So we're trying to use that with our staff, "I need help," three-button click, and "we need help." An example would be if a staff member saw someone with a weapon approaching a building. By repeatedly pressing the button, a lockdown would be activated at their specific site. So what happens in a staff alert? So again, if you push the button three times, "I need help," an immediate notification is sent to a response team at that specific site. Response teams have been constructed at each of our sites consisting of administrators, school counselors, and our nurses. When an alert occurs, "I need help," all the responders at that site receive two things, the desktop takeover and a notification on their cell phone. It displays a map of the building, the location of the alert, you can see in this picture, it would be the red dot, and the staff member that triggered that alert. So it specifically comes up, it's very small, but it'll say "staff alert," and it says the room number, and it also says the specific person that put that alert. Another thing about the map that comes to the phone and to the desktop takeover is that red dot will move with the person as they move in the building. So if you have a student in crisis that is fleeing, the staff member can pursue that student, and that red dot will follow, and the administrative team will know where to go to provide that help, so that red dot is not stagnant. From the information, the response team can quickly act following our typical procedures. The desktop takeover and phone notification overrides all applications, all other applications on the responses device. So if there was to be an alert right now on our campus, you would see, you wouldn't see, because my computer is weird, but on my computer screen, it would come to the front over top of my presentation right now and tell me exactly, it'll show me that exact alert and tell me where to go. The badges are specific to a location. So again, we talked about if I push an alert while I'm in the annex, first the primary, first the high school, it alerts different response teams. However, the responders are notified no matter where they are, so on or off campus, so that they're able to take an action. So an example would be we have an IRA parent that confronts a bus driver after a field trip at 10:00 PM, and they're in the photo road lot. The bus driver can push that three times, "I need help," and the high school response team will get an alert, and then they can call the police, they can call that driver, and they can intervene to provide that support. So that is for a three-button push, "I need help." So what happens in the case of a lockdown? So in the event that a member, a staff member calls a lockdown, additional actions occur. First, a strobe light that you have in front of you turns red and will flash red in our classrooms and our hallways. An announcement over the PA system at that site will provide instructions to students and staff about locking them. A desktop takeover occurs on every staff laptop and iPad at that site explaining to initiate a lockdown. It looks slightly different, it would be like this example, so it's just gonna come up to the front and tell that staff member to lock down and get their students safe. And the responder group will still receive the same notification, so the desktop takeover for the responder group, as well as the alerts for the phone, that a lockdown has been called. When a lockdown is called, using the system, the new police department is also instantly notified, saving precious time. So all of these things result in immediate communication and faster intervention for staff members and responders in the event of a lockdown. So what is our implementation process, where are we at, what does this look like? So we began in early August with the installation of the gateways, beacons, and strobes in all of our school buildings and in the administrative office. We are continuing our installation process at the high school, middle school cafeteria, the annex, and the McCoy Center to ensure full coverage of our campus. And then we will test the system to make sure it has the coverage as expected and add other beacons as necessary. Our training process for the staff has included a presentation on the crisis load system outlining everyone's shared responsibility for the safety of our campus. All staff members sign a Syntetix badge agreement outlining the specific ways they need to take care of their badge every day. And every staff member has an opportunity to test their badge by pushing it three times to make sure it connects with the system, and they do that with a badge manager at every one of our sites. This past week, we conducted lockdown drills at all of our sites to test the strobe lights and the desktop takeovers, and we're learning a lot from that experience. We continue to work with Syntetix to ensure all software and equipment has worked properly. Moving forward, we will be working with the building and district administrators to review emergency processes that already exist in the district to add Syntetix Crisis Alert where necessary. The system is currently active, so if we were to, again, to get an alert in the building, that three-button push works. However, the lockdown feature is in drill mode currently, so it's active, but it's not live. And so in the near future, we've already worked with Chief Jones at the police department, and we will be working with their communications team to connect with 911 dispatch and then set a go-live date for the district. And so at that point, that means that in the event of a lockdown, that instant communication would go to the police department. So as I conclude, I want to take this opportunity to thank Superintendent Sawyers and Treasurer Jenkins, the representatives from Syntetix, and all of our staff members for their support as we've been implementing this new system. We are excited about the opportunity, an additional layer of support Syntetix Crisis Alert adds to our environment. This is truly a game changer when it comes to increasing speed of communication and the ability for our staff members to let us know so that we can intervene faster. We believe that these updates will help to continue to achieve the best academic and developmental outcomes for each student in a safe and secure learning environment. Thank you, and I will open it up for any questions.
Say thank you for foresight to put this system in, I'm glad we have it. My understanding is that this is the same software, the same system that was in place in Georgia recently.
Yep, we can infer that with that.
Saw some videos firsthand of council teachers saying what a difference it made that they actually got to the threat for, unfortunately, obviously horrific situation, but got to them before there was gunfire. So thank you, and let's get this going as soon as we can, I guess this is my hope. One question, did you have like, can you have multiple alerts, and how did additional red dots show up on the screen?
Yeah, great question, yeah. So the system will take as many alerts that are, that occur. The responder groups have been trained to not turn off any alerts until we resolve that incident, so exactly right. So we'll say a student in crisis in the hallway, you might have three people click "I need help" at the same time, all three red dots would show up on that.
And I was thinking about the education process in the schools for students, making them aware that this system now exists. And if there, there's not an expectation that students have access to this system.
They should not have access to it.
And if they did, it would be unauthorized.
Correct.
Right, so they'd have to be made aware of that. But also, more practically, if a teacher was incapacitated because of a medical emergency, students knowing how to use the teacher's badge, is that something that we have an expectation for them?
You bring up an excellent point. This is our process of rolling this out and communicating both with our staff internally and now externally with our community. So we have not talked in depth about communicating with students and allowing them to have access. All communication really has been with staff about taking care of your badge, where to place it, not giving enough to students. There are some courses that are naturally set up where a staff member might not have their badge. That could be in our classroom, or a science classroom, or a physical education classroom. So I know our building principals are working closely with specific teacher needs based on those, those type of situations. But we haven't really spoken in depth of what we would do to train students, and then at what buildings would we work on doing that, what's each appropriate? So I think those are where future conversations are going.
Right. The bus transportation building included in the, as a, as a site?
Yes, all of our drivers, the inter-mechanics also have these badges.
But not the physical building, I think is Mark's question.
Correct, the transportation department does not have Syntetix at that site.
Only on main campus, the ELC.
This is intended to be more to lanyard?
Yep, so it is, yeah, so the way that we've taught our staff is to wear it behind your ID, so to protect that button. And it's also discreet, so if you are in, we'll say confronted by an angry parent, you can quickly click three times, and the parent may not even know that you're pressing the button. But it also protects it, so yes, that's how we've instructed our staff.
And you mentioned, "I need help," and "we need help," that's just a helpful memorization to note it three times, you don't have to give a verbal statement.
Correct.
Just remember, "I need help" is three pushes, three clicks. Just remember, "I need help" is three pushes, three clicks.
And so the signal back to the individual, when you click it three times and it's active, so it didn't work for you, but it vibrates once in your hand. And for a full lockdown, it will vibrate twice in your hand. That's how you know, as a staff member, you clicked it off. But the "I need help," yes, is to remember to push it three times.
This is great. It's very reassuring to know that we have an added layer of security and communication on campus.
There it is. Did you send a text to somebody?
That's the alert.
So that's what it sounds like when you're a responder.
What is it? What is that?
And then it comes up.
And then this takes over your computer, so you actually get to see what happens to your computer.
So how do you initiate the lockdown?
I did it while I was sitting here.
He did it on his app, but he would do it, he would push this button eight times.
Or you just, or we just tell him, just keep pushing. You don't have to count, just push it until you get a double vibration. It's more than three, you will know.
I was going to ask if you wanted to test the system.
So is that, that's on?
It's on the.
System-wide, you hear the word that?
So the alert that you heard, that buzzer is coming from our cell phones for responders. If you're in the building, you would hear an announcement, the strobe lights would flash red, you would get the desktop takeover, as Michael just showed you, in every staff computer and iPad.
And if you weren't near a desktop or your phone, if you heard the alert, the announcement would tell you why the alert went off?
Yes, exactly. So there's a visual component, audio component, and the desktop takeover. So it comes to the front of whatever you're doing.
Even the close proximity of our buildings, particularly on this part of campus, so a building calls, it indicates a lockdown, what is the impact on the surrounding buildings?
So right now, the way that we have talked about it from our process and procedure and the way we have it set up in Synthetix, one site at a time could go into lockdown. And then we quickly get on the radios to understand why are they locked down to determine other lockdowns. When a school goes into lockdown, the only people to lift the lockdown is the police department. So if by chance we do have an accidental push, we have a younger child who grabs it and just starts pushing it, and we'll just say the ELC goes into lockdown, we want to make sure that's a legitimate lockdown to consider other lockdowns. But that's how the system is set up right now. The responders at all sites will know that that building is in lockdown versus a typical response, "I need help," is only a localized response.
It enhances the existing processes that are already in place within the school district. This just is an enhancement to that to ensure faster response. And to Paul's point, at the end of the day, every second counts.
As you said, there's plans in place already, but this doesn't track the location of the threat. But there's other, I don't want to know publicly like what that is, but I present between the police and the district, there is instructions to our staff as to how to communicate the location of the threat.
Correct. So for, actually for all alerts, "I need help" or lockdown event, before you clear the, before you clear the alert, you have to say the reason why for data tracking purposes, so we have some understanding. But in the moment, you're right, we would know the people that are pushing the alert, but we wouldn't know the exact location, but it helps a lot. Working with our SROs already, they said this would cut our communication time down tremendously. Chief Jones said part of their procedure is to start in one wing and clear wings until they hear something. And so they would know right away where to go, really speeds up their intervention time.
Again, this is a system that will enhance existing systems on the school campus. We already go through a formalized process with the New Albany Police Department, Plain Township Fire Department, and Ohio Homeland Security to approve confidential safety plans on our school campus. Those have always existed. This is enhancing those safety plans, but to Paul's point, there are aspects of our safety plans that are not discussed publicly because it is information only for first responders and school officials to protect the safety and welfare of children. But we have a very robust process that we go through with homeland security. Any other questions for Mr. Kramer?
That's great, thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now for discussion items, beginning with board liaison reports. Do we have any reports this evening?
I didn't attend the most recent township trustees meeting, but there's one this week and I will be attending.
Financial Committee, we have our meeting in October that we'll go through. And then for PTO liaison, I reach out to all the PTO presidents to offer coming to a fall and a spring meeting similar to how, you know, other liaisons attend city meetings or township meetings, so I can report back to the board on all the great things happening in our PTOs. So that invitation has been extended and scheduling dates for the ones that have responded to go and just hear what they're doing. I think that's great. All right, now may I have a motion and a second for Treasurer's item A, please?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Newmoff and Mr. Wilson, Treasurer Jenkins.
Thank you. The monthly financials, this is for August, so we're two months into the fiscal year. In total, we are point four-six percent lower than what I anticipated in revenue collection. The biggest part of that is real estate tax. So we're going to want to watch that to see whether or not that's just a change in when people are paying their taxes or if that's actually, or we have more delinquent taxes being paid. We'll know that when we get to the end of projections in the spring. And then income tax sharing was down about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars from anticipation. I expect that is just timing. And then on our expenditures, we are three-point-one-five percent lower in total than what our projected expenditures are for the month, for the fiscal year to date. So about four-hundred thousand dollars lower in total. The bulk of that is personnel and benefits. And then a portion is also the permanent, for the capital outlay, which we don't spend unless we really have to because we have permanent dollars. Answering questions.
Two negative items on revenues, but you think it's just timing.
Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll. Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
President Kalanowski? Yes, and the motion carries. Now may I have a motion and a second for Superintendent Items A through Z, please?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Newmoff and Ms. Fuller, Superintendent Sawyer.
President Kalanowski, members of the board, Letter A for Personnel. We continue to try to fill the remaining vacancies for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We're approving athletic supplementals or corrections to athletic supplementals by title that were mistaken on the last Board of Education agenda. Amending contracts based upon hours, so we do have some classifications, specifically when a bus driver becomes an aide or a van driver becomes an aide, we have to adjust hours based upon the route they went through the bid process, but give them still the opportunity to work in the other job classification if they're successful with them in employment process. So those appear this evening under Letter A. Letter B, I'm going to start with the addendum again to recall. You are approving, and the recommendation this evening to approve the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five continuous improvement plan for the school district that will then trigger other actions on my behalf, on behalf of the board with employees. In addition to that, call your attention on one other thing, and it's the cooperative bid process. So I am recommending this evening, based upon the review that Ms. Jenkins and I did, that we submit to Meta Solutions for the cooperative advertisement receiving bids specifically related to school transportation for the purchase of two school buses. So we buy them as part of the co-op to get the best price possible because sometimes it's actually less than the state term price that's been guaranteed to go through the cooperative purchasing process at the same time. So we are recommending that continue this evening. Letter C for donations. As always, we're very grateful for everyone that so generously supports our school district. Tonight's no exception. You'll see different types of things that happen for back-to-school events to supporting specific athletic accounts, camp accounts, or specific teams, the robotics team. It's just wonderful that there's so many businesses or individuals within our community that want to support specific elements of our kids' programs, and you see elements of that tonight on the agenda. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Jenkins, please call the roll. Vice President Newmoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
President Kalanowski? Yes, and the motion carries. That brings us to adjournment this evening. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Who?
Second. Mr. Wilson and Ms. Fuller, Ms. Jenkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller? Yes.
Vice President. President Kalanowski? Yes, and the motion carries. Our next meeting is on October seventh at five-thirty PM at this location. Thank you.